All right, so I think we've got everybody together and we are now at 7:01, so why don't we go ahead and call to order?
Is Jenny with us?
Um. I don't recall having heard that she wasn't going to make it, so if she's running late, she'll be with us in a minute or two.
All right.
Okay. So after call to order, our first item of business is the agenda and corrections for the agenda tonight. As Melissa, our development coordinator has indicated to me that she has a a family engagement that's going to take her, pull her away from 45. I propose that we move her to the top of the agenda as the next item up.
And then I think maybe this would come under a committee report, but last month we said that this month, Jenny would potentially provide an update on a teen volunteer program.
Oh, yeah.
So Eric, it looks like maybe you had some difficulty hearing me.
Yeah, I I'm having an internet moment here and I'm not sure why. I keep trying to scoot like myself closer and closer to the where I know the router is.
And it looks like Jenny's dialing in now.
Yeah.
She's just dialing now.
Well, and I can provide you a little bit of information on that. The wrench in the gears right now is with all of our programming is the COVID numbers that we've backed off in-person programming. And you know, unless the numbers really plateau here, we're likely to postpone the programming, put off the in-person programming for at least the first half of February as well. So it's a bit of a, bit of a challenge to do a lot of scheduling when most of our programs unfortunately are headed the other way off the calendar. Jenny, we were discussing the situation with the teen volunteer mystery reader program and when the dates might be set for that. My understanding was we were looking towards March. I don't remember some of the specific dates that we were throwing around though.
Yeah, you know what they're going to be? It's going to be the first and third Saturday of the month. So I was just Eliza hadn't, hadn't Eliza was going to, she had a meeting, I think, to discuss whether February programming was going to move forward.
Yeah, that's will be touching base.
Yeah. So we have the March date set. Yes, March, April and May.
So I think actually what we had hoped for with Bonnie's comment was some of the board, probably most of the board doesn't know much about this program. So we'd love to hear about the highlights of it. Obviously, scheduling is something between you guys, but when we get to committee reports or at some point in time, new business or whatever, Jenny, if you could just fill us in on your plans.
Oh, yes, that sounds great. And maybe before we get rolling, if everyone can mute, I'm getting a lot of echo on everybody's microphone. So maybe if everybody mutes unless you're talking, that might resolve it.
I don't know about your, your audio, Bonnie, but mine got a lot better. All right. So Melissa, I believe that brings us to you as our first item up.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Hi, everybody. Thank you for your flexibility with the agenda. I am here to talk about the development coordinator situation and the beginning of our steering committee. A couple of weeks ago, several of us met as a steer ad hoc steering committee to get started on plans for 2022. And we had a productive meeting based on the results in the last quarter of 2021. So as a, as a ad hoc committee, we flew up the flagpole, the idea of pivoting slightly. So rather than remaining in the quiet phase, we've often talked about, we're talking about going a bit broader, not asking for such large, large gifts, but extending opportunities to everyone to make any kind of gift and try to build a sustainable giving program at the library from which we can build a donor base that we could groom and prepare for a larger campaign when the time is right. Did I leave anything out on that? Other committee members or anything you'd like to add?
I think that's good.
Okay. So we're wrapping up our thank yous and acknowledgements from 2021. There aren't that many, but we're grateful that those that gave. And moving forward, we're just going to come up with a little more, we're going to pull a little more excitement into this program and see if we can loop more people in tactics that are a little more, a little more aligned with annual fund rather than a capital campaign. We're not going to give up asking for larger gifts from corporations and foundations, local businesses and corporate matching programs. But for our community, we're going to try going in more of an annual fund route. Can I answer any questions? Okay, thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. And that will then take us back onto our regularly scheduled agenda. First item of which up is comments from the public. So do we have any members of the public who are present here who would like to address the Board of Trustees this evening? Not hearing any, I will move us on to our next item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the December 14th, 2021 Board of Trustees meeting. I had read through and I don't have any comments or corrections.
I just wondered one thing, Bonnie, about you had written that there was one correction to the November 16th minutes. Did you then go back and correct them on the October minutes or the November minutes and resubmit that? Because it needs, whatever the correction was, needs to be somewhere in the record. And usually what I used to do was put the correction, what the correction was like right there. This was the correction, blah, blah, blah. Now, if you go back and redo the, the previous minutes, I think sometimes I did that and sometimes I didn't. But just, just one little thing. It's not, I'm not saying it's a correction. I'm just saying that it might be helpful to somebody, you know, reading it that if we know what the correction was.
Right. Okay. So um, thank you for that. I corrected the minutes and resent them to Eric.
Yeah.
And so if it's okay with the board moving forward, I will note what the correction is in the minutes as well as update the prior month's minutes with said correction, just to tie it all together.
Thank you. Yeah, I usually did the one in like I just talked about, and sometimes I did, and sometimes it didn't with Eric.
Yeah.
You're probably doing what, what should be done, but I just thought I'd mention it. Other than that, it all looks good to me.
Thanks, Jenny. Eric, you're on mute.
Yep, I was. So I would look for a motion then to approve the minutes and a second.
I still move.
I'll second.
I think we should take a vote.
Yeah. I guess all in, all in favor?
I pros.
Oh, so I wondered what's going, well, I.
Hi. Hi.
I think we're good.
Erica, can you hear me?
I am in yeah, I'm in a weird.
Okay, well, I was
dropping out.
Just to Eric if he freezes, he has a handstand, but I guess you can see it.
Okay, so I heard all eyes to, or were there any nays?
Okay. That will take us up to the financial reports. Okay, I am going to share to my screen here. Okay, financial reports, as we had discussed at last month's meeting, right at the start of December, there was a 193,000 property tax saved and as expected, that shows up on this month's ledger, takes us up to 97.56% received. I don't really have too much in the way of concerns that will get the last 25,000 there. That's a pretty typical amount to receive over the last few months of the fiscal year. Passports continue to go strong with 1,073 and 18 cents in revenue. We are going gangbusters this month, January as, as well, and it looks probable that this will be at least our second busiest month and has a shot depending on how many appointments we pick up in the last week and a half to be our busiest. So we'll see. Another month with a large number for miscellaneous income as previous months with that, the driving factor for that is reimbursement for Melissa's salary. Libraries reimbursed from the foundation for her salary. And I think those were most of the items that I had marked down here to comment on, other than the bottom line with us at 68% of the budget expended, which is right where we should be. We are two thirds of the way through the fiscal year. And with our budget being front loaded with lots of expenses in May and as few as we can manage in April, 68 is spot on where we want to be. So any question on any of the financial reports?
What, what line item is Melissa's reimbursement draw?
Oh, where is the, the revenue going or where is the?
Where does it show up on the?
Staff salaries.
Oh, okay. I think you.
No problem. Any other questions? If not, then I would look for a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
A second.
Motion for Bill, second from Jenny. Okay, and as always with a financial vote, we'll do roll call. Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Sean.
Hi.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano. I think you said I Jenny, but you're muted.
Sorry, I.
Thank you. Trustees Audi.
Hi.
All right, financial documents are approved. And we will move on to the checks. Okay. First item that I have to draw attention to. Yep.
Sorry, is there anything that we need to discuss on the balance sheet? It's on the agenda before checks?
It is always a part of the agenda, but there's not usually much to say until the end of the fiscal year. It's kind of a running, running tally whose main output for the library concern is the current balance of the general reserve. But until we get to the end of the fiscal year, there's not much, not much to comment on.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for asking. Okay. Item number one with the checks that I have to draw your attention to is the $400 on check 15034 to Bio One. Bio One is the company that we've been using to disinfect the library with electrostatic fog when we've had COVID known to have COVID in the building. So we of course had them out earlier in the month following the report of a positive case on staff with the staff member having been in working the day before. So they have been very quick and very effective in terms of getting back to us and getting out quickly and efficiently. The folks right below them, Cary Public Library. As always, when public, other public libraries show up on the check report, it's an interlibrary loan issue. In this case, as usual, interlibrary loan item was lost and we collect the, the money here for the, the lost item, but then regardless of what we collect, we owe that amount back to the lending library. That's kind of the guarantee built into the system with interlibrary lending that each receiving library will promises to pick up the tab even if they can't collect from their patron. Okay, and what was my next one I was going to mention? Ah, yes. And then the last one I wanted to draw attention to was Next Word Communications. We have indeed switched our website maintenance vendors. Next word had been our supplier for that service up until the end of 2021. These should represent the last bills that we'll have from them. Sort of the closing of accounts in the last quarterly bill for services provided this fall, which is indeed a little bit more, a little bit more than our usual. We had a number of projects that we pushed to finish before we switched over.
Eric, who is going to be the new vendor?
I will call in Martha O'Hara, who oversees our website to talk about that since she has taken the, the lead on identifying and working with the new person.
So we are now working with Net2 Community, which was recommended by Next Word. They specialize particularly in working with nonprofits and so we're, we're working with, with them now. Our primary contact there is Bob Snodgrass and they've been good so far.
Thank you. Is, is there expected to be any expense reduction in moving to this other vendor?
It looks like there's a, there's a chance that there could be some expense reduction. Yeah. The the, the contract and the setup with Next Word was very upfront heavy. So, you know, we paid a decent sized retainer for web maintenance and Nikki also handled a lot of the, the web hosting for us. For the, the new setup, we're going to be handling the charges for the web hosting ourselves. So we'll have a bit more control and agency over that. And working with the, the new company, Bob is much more of a believer in billing for services as they occur. So the contract upfront is actually, I don't think he had us put down anything upfront as far as a retainer. Some will be you know, retaining his services and then build as we use them. So beg your pardon, but short term, I think it's just a year. Martha, correct me on that if I'm wrong.
I don't know if there was a timeframe.
Yeah, we, we had done our due diligence and vetted him. We didn't have a lot of time to do a turnaround on going out for a typical bid. So we vetted, talked with him a bit, got a sense as far as what he would bring in and then did a short-term contract figuring that if need be, we can do a pivot and get it out to bid in pretty, pretty short fashion, fingers crossed.
It next word, make the decision not to do business with us then and sort of recommended the net to. Is that how it came about?
Nikki retired.
Oh, okay.
So she she brought her shingle in and decided to get out of the web maintenance business. So she was very appreciative. I didn't get the sense that she would have dropped us in, had she stayed in the business.
Got it. Okay.
She did say I was the easiest person in the world to work with. I want that in the public record.
Duly noted, duly noted.
Right.
Look at the minutes.
Yeah.
All right. Any other check questions, any other questions about web maintenance? If not, I would look for a motion to approve. Let me grab the check range here. It is an approval for checks 15,029, 15,031, and then 15,033 to 15,067. Move motion. Motion from John, second.
I'll second.
Second from Bill. I'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Bye.
Trustee Sean.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Trustees Audi.
Hi.
Checks are approved. Okay, and that will take us down to our our committee reports. For the Campaign Planning Committee, we had gotten a report on that to start things off from Melissa.
Yeah, Eric, may I just comment on that, please?
Yeah, yeah. And that was where I was going was Kathy or John's, is there anything anybody would like to add?
Well, I just wanted to explain to the board how that committee came to be because it's a new committee and the Melissa was meeting with John individually. She was meeting with Eric individually. She was meeting with Eric, myself and herself again. So she was doing a lot of meetings and it was getting a little confusing as to where we were going and suggestion was made that we do sensitivity. So we wanted to discuss it with John. I thought that Janie should be part of that conversation, but that would be three trustees and that would be having running, we'd be running into issues with open meetings. So that's why I asked Eric to form the new committee mid-year, that, that typically wouldn't happen. And I wanted to explain the, the purpose of that. So I think, actually, we meet again tomorrow, tomorrow. So we'll keep you informed. I think that's going to be the primary driving force of this campaign for a while anyway. So is John, you agree with that or will there be?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I think it's just tighter and so, and I think that group will begin to expand. So we'll of course keep you informed about that. But it does allow a group of trustees to meet without having any issues with open meetings. So that's how that came to be.
Yeah, and to tack on to what Kathy had said, one of the authorities that's provided to the, the board president is, is doing basically this to, to say, I would like to see created a special committee for X purpose. So this is one of the, one of the things built in with the bylaws and I completely agree. This is such, going to be such an efficiency going forward because Melissa really was doing a lot of running around and a, a lot of it was getting to be just making sure we stayed compliant with open meetings. And you know, once it's an regular ad hoc committee and it's posted per all the rules, then we're fine. We don't need to worry about that and we can stop playing telephone. John, anything to add? I suppose I should say, Jane, you were there as well. Anything to add on either of your parts?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's organizationally, it makes a whole lot of sense. I think being able to come to some type of accord with the friends and they're all their efforts is going to be out of the starting gate, one of the critical elements in the plan. From database to, you know, solicitations to everything else, stewardship. I think being able to get fundraising on in a unified fashion is just going to be critical to success. So.
Jenny, anything to?
No, I would just say that what, what John just said is my feelings exactly that, that we need to approach the friends because they already have in place a lot of what we would need to put in place if we were to do this independently of them anyway. And there, there have been certain important things that have changed since this campaign began that might make make the friends more amenable to getting involved with our capital campaign this way. So I, I, I think it's really a, if they say no again, I will have to say that it's going to set us back to square one, unfortunately, but I hope they don't.
We have to pitch it so they can't say no.
Get your Sicilian accent going.
I'll do that. That's what it takes.
On that note, I'll jump in for the, the next committee report, which also touches for the Intergovernmental Agreement Committee. We had, as per my last report on the Intergovernmental Agreement Committee, there had been a meeting in the, late in the fall to discuss what to do with the memorial bricks. The museum has indicated that they feel strong. The museum has indicated that they feel strongly that the money received for the brick program now exceeds that their expenses now exceed the money received for those. And the catch there being that they had felt that either the museum should keep the proceeds or that the friends should take over and keep the proceeds. So we had initially discussed Melissa possibly jumping in on that. That did not work. And then we came back and we got together again as we had planned to do at the, at the outset, at the initial meeting in the fall that we were going to circle back around and evaluate if Melissa jumping in had worked or not. We did that. We met last week and the friends actually had a proposal that they wanted to put forward, which was that they were seriously thinking about taking over, taking up the offer and jumping, stepping in to do the bricks. Javier, who's the treasurer for the, for the friends feels strongly that it could be done a lot more efficiently than it's currently being done. So the, the friends meeting here on, on Saturday then was a, a discussion with Kathy McKechnie from the museum and information presented from Ava as to the possibility of the, the friends doing basically that. So the friends are presently discussing that. Mary Dollman, who is a longtime member of the friends and occasional trustee, occasional secretary and board member for the friends did offer to step in and run the brick program and do the, the tracking work. So fingers crossed, I, I think they'll probably go with that. If, if not, then the ball would be back in the museum's court and I would expect that we will want to work with them to get something clearly defined as far as the status of the, of the program. Uh, since the, the entirety of the brick program really just stems all the way back to the last minutes of the last fundraising council in two thousand and three that we had. And the, kind of the final discussions of that committee as to what should we do with all the stuff that we were doing? So one way or another out of this, we'll, we'll come away with a better and clearer understanding of the program. So that is where currently stand with that. Yeah.
Yeah. Is there any discussion on just closing, closing it down? I mean, what's the, what's the value in keeping it going? I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, it is while it's not a capital fundraiser, the, the estimate from Kathy McKechnie, as far as the number of spaces remaining is that there are still seventy spaces for new bricks to be put in. At a hundred and twenty-five dollars a brick, uh, which is what the bricks are going for right now, that, that does still equal, uh, I think it's eight thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
But that, that's gross, not net.
True.
So what's the, what's the cost of the brick and the installation? I mean, I, I, my guess is what I'm saying is when you factor all that in, it's a margin, to my view, it's a marginal revenue source or what's involved in the running it anyway.
It's it, it's, it's, it's not a like gangbusters fundraising
No.
thing. The, the value I, I think is as much in the, the visibility of it, that it's a very visible means of giving and supporting. And that can be very attractive sometimes to potential donors to be able to give on that level. And then you get something you know, ni- nice and visible, something you can point out to the kids when you're
Yeah, no, I got it.
walking past. So my, my understanding is, is that in, in part Ava being the very very practical as, as a treasure, the, the friends have always been very fortunate to have her services. And she's very keen to really dig in on this and I think has already mapped out a number of the variables, such as the cost of the bricks.
Okay.
So if, if, if she feels that it can be done profitably with minimal you know, time needing to be put into it, then I would tend to agree. She's usually very, very sharp when it comes to the numbers.
Okay.
But the, a big part of the reason why it was not working for the, for the museum, besides dividing the funds was that they had gone from having a volunteer do it to having Adrian Fawcett, who's their paid staff member oversee the program, which added a lot of cost. Okay. Good questions on the, on the bricks. Uh, so then I think we're moving on to look at our other committees here. Uh, I can lead in Janie for you on the building and grounds committee. I have still not been able to get ahold of Sean Kelly in the new year and I'm not sure what's, uh, the story is there.
That's very odd.
It is. He's usually very diligent. But hopefully I'll be in touch with him shortly and we can get things moving down the road.
Eric, have you set up a time for the finance committee?
Not yet. Was waiting to hear back from one committee member about their availability for the date and time that looked like it would work. So hopefully very shortly I will have that set and posted. It looks like it's going to be either six or seven o'clock next Monday. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. And if you, if there's a conflict and there's two out of three, let's, let's get it scheduled so we can get moving on this, this budget.
Indeed. Okay. Human right, human resources and long range planning are also have meetings coming up on the calendar. I need to send out a doodle poll to get the ball rolling and getting the technology committee set up. So fingers crossed here. All will be set. Any, for any of those committees, anything to that the chairs would like to jump in and report?
I guess I should just ask Jenny, Jenny, do you have everything that you need from me for HR?
Yes, thank you for sending all that to me.
No problem.
That was great.
Okay. All right then.
Eric, or Eric, quick question. Were, were we still contemplating reaching out to Tricia Brockett for HR? Kind of as the potential grooming program or or de facto board expansion? Hadn't we talked about that in a previous meeting?
We did. You know what? I sent her an email, but I, she, I, she probably hasn't gotten a chance to get back to me. But Janie has a lot of the work that she did, so she has forwarded that to me. And so we're going to use that to move forward. But if you have a connection to her, then, uh, you know, and you could reach out to her, that's great.
No, I, I don't, I do not. Um, she does live in my neighborhood, so I, I might see her from time to time on a walk, but you know, I just, I, she seemed to be particularly interested in, and you know, initially had some very good value in the, the short period she was with the board. So I figured, you know, all boats in the rising tide if she is interested.
Yeah, no, she did a great job and you can tell from all the work that Janie has forwarded to me. So but yeah, I will set out, try to connect with her again.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions? Otherwise I'll move this along to the, our one item of new business. Which is the draft budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. This hasn't been discussed yet by the finance committee. The finance committee will be meeting, fingers crossed, within the next seven to 10 days to discuss. So for, for this evening, we're not looking at any sort of approval or in-depth review or anything like that. The, the budget is here this evening to get it out in front of the trustees so that the process of getting a lot of sets of eyes on it and asking questions and getting discussion started can get rolling. In, in particular, I think this evening, if we were to gather some questions that the finance committee could circle around back to at their meeting coming up, that would probably be very helpful. I will go over quickly a couple of highlights as far as the pieces that are factoring into the budget. As always, there's a lot in the, the budget that is fairly consistent. We, we know what our contracts are and, and in terms of what those expenses are going to be. We know from a lot of experience about how much we're likely to spend on particular programming as well as particular sets of resources, materials that we bring in to add to collections. So the, the items that are real variables for the fiscal year ahead. We've got some changes to the staff compensation calculations. We had a staff member who retired and we took advantage of the flexibility that that offered to increase salaries for some other staff. Uh, and the net result there is that we'll see staff salaries budget line that is a bit higher offset by a benefits line, medical insurance line that's lower because we now have fewer people taking advantage of that benefit. So then a result for staff expenses as a whole is going to be pretty much a wash. We need to get a new firewall server and that's a strong recommendation from our friends at CVI. Uh, we had replaced the, the virtual server. I believe just last year, um, early in twenty twenty-one. This was one that they had also made a recommendation for at the, at the same time, but we adopted to space things out so that we weren't forced to dip into general reserve funds by doing things all in one go, if we could avoid that. Uh, we have some siding on the north side of the building that's due for some replacement. That's a, a regular thing. Periodically, we target specific areas of the siding on the building. Uh, north side is the one that has the big slope of the roof, so not going to be a substantial expense because as you can probably guess.
Room in the other room furniture, other room for the furniture.
Room for the furniture?
I'm sorry, I'm talking to my son. That's my bad, unmuted. I'm about to walk in the house.
That's okay. It was, I was just lost for a moment. That's all right.
Actually, I was, I was trying to figure out, Eric, I'm trying to picture where their siding on the north side of the library. It seems to me it's all brick and glass.
There's not much. It's most of, mostly if you look all the way up top. There's a little bit, all the way up there, uh, around the windows. So it's exciting to work on, but there's not a lot and it's generally not a big expense to swap that out, but doing so regularly is important. Uh, we have in the, in the past by not keeping as close an eye on that sometimes had, uh, that generate leak issues. So we just try and stay as on top of it as we can be. Okay. And then the, the last item is that we need to get ourselves into a little bit of a cycle here as far as starting to swap out some of our office chairs, both public and staff. They are now over ten years old and some of them are getting as you would imagine with regularly used office chairs, a little bit long in the tooth. Some of them are missing many teeth, uh, point of fact, and are just kind of having pieces falling off of them. So office chairs, of course, the, the ones that will last you through ten to twelve years. Usually a, a decent capital expense. So we're looking at spacing the expense out over a number of years so that we don't have to dip into reserve or anything like that and can just get ourselves dialed in to just swap out the worst offenders, uh, most broken of them each year.
Hey Eric, it's Bonnie. I'm, I'm curious if there's been any discussion around stand-up desks. Um, a lot of companies have moved to where, you know, employees will have a desk, but there's also the ability to quickly just pop it up to a stand-up. It's just much better for employee health and wellbeing. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there. A lot, it's, they've been high demand during COVID and work from home.
I, I can't speak for everybody on staff, but I would love one. No, right. Right now, we're focused more on replacing the, the broken items. I, I think looking forward towards a purposeful redesign of the staff workspace, I think is something that we should look at, um, but wasn't really the conversation as we've currently had it thus far. I think it would definitely be worth looking into. You know, fair, fair chance that it, it wouldn't necessarily work that well with our space that's available, but I would love to see it. And I, I don't understand why any of my staff would not want to be able to jog while they worked. Sounds amazing.
Eric, there's a reason why I'm staying muted.
I, I know. Idea as part of
I'm being, I'm trolling you guys at this point. I'm well aware.
I think that's a good idea though, to consider it as part of a potential redesign. It's, it's so much better for you as a, you know, someone who spent thirty years sitting. I wish I'd spent some of those years standing and working.
Yeah.
I would have to say standing and working does have its limitations too.
Yeah.
I think you have to have both, honestly. I really, I think you
Being up and down is, is ideal, moving around.
Okay, so something I think that we can definitely take the time to discuss more and take a closer look at. Any, any additional questions?
Just one question on, on some of the, the big ticket items. The, the, the heating and air conditioning is, is that something we're still a few years away from looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Fingers crossed. And because it knows I'm talking about it, it's probably up to something. But it's been on pretty good behavior the last year, year and a half.
Okay.
So I think we're still I want to say eight years, eight years is out on the, the target that we were projected to get to round about twenty thirty. Obviously, we need to keep an eye on that. Uh, that would be one of the big things that I would really look for uh, when we, fingers crossed, are able to get our friends at Angberg Anderson out here to take a look at our mechanical facilities. I would be very interested in their thoughts as far as the state of that.
Pretty good luck since Murphy and Mueller took over our maintenance. Better, better than any other period of time I was on the board. We were forever having problems. So keepers fingers crossed.
There, there have been definitely a number of persistent problems that they fixed, which is really appreciated.
Eric, just another question on the proposed budget for next year. Um, so you know, one of the things that we talked about in our visits with other libraries is the balance between e-collections and physical collection. And kind of what that's, what that's going to look like moving forward. Did you propose some rebalancing between the two? And kind of what that's what that's going to look like moving forward. Did you propose some rebalancing between the two?
Well, the the challenge. Scroll down here so that we can have the the numbers up on the screen. The the challenge.
Make them a little bigger.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the. Let's see, where's my ebooks there? So you can see a $2,000 increase there projected for for ebooks. We continue to put. A lot of our per capita grant funds towards the ebooks as well. So that line continues to get beefed up. The the primary challenge that we've seen in terms of moving funds over. Has been that. The popularity of the physical collections. Continue to hold pretty steady. We had with a decreased need for. Like ready reference materials, encyclopedias and the like, really been able to move some of our adult nonfiction and reference funds. A number of years back, but other than that. The community has continued to stay pretty steady in their interest to most of the popular. Physical materials. So there there hasn't been that much opportunity based off popularity to move fun as well as. You know, in expenses per item expenses continue to increase. So the the purchasing power of the particular lines, even when we hold them steady, that tends to be a net decrease, even if. More often a small one rather than a large one. But it's a good challenge. As things go to to have. Well, you know, I've got this amazing new opportunity that that, you know, the patrons are excited about and we need to get money going there and. Isn't it a bummer that everything that we're doing is still so popular as well? But. Well, it's a, it's a good challenge. It is still a challenge and we are definitely still working on finding ways to. Boost and improve. That ebooks line. But with with the doors being open, particularly the juvenile collections have been going very strong. So. I'm hoping I answered, got enough information to answer your question as far as the the thought going into the collections lines.
Yeah, and I just, I want to make sure I understand what you're showing me. So where there are. Numbers in red in parentheses, that's an increase on year over year in juvenile audio visual expense, juvenile e-reference.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the 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 first blue column is the the current year budget, and then the second blue column is the proposed next year's budget. Sorry, forgot that I didn't have the column headers on the page.
Thank you.
Can see for ebooks 17,000 this year to propose 19,000 next year. And if I can, if I can shake free another thousand or two, I will add them. Yep, Julian.
Actually, it's Anna, just to clarify, I asked about the the red numbers. Those are decreases if they're red. Just to clarify, because.
Oh, yeah.
Increases are not. Differently noted. I don't know what to call it.
Okay, decreases are red and in parentheses. Okay, thank you. May maybe one thing that might be helpful. For the second review of the budget is, and may and maybe the finance committee does this already, I don't know, but. You know, so there's a certain amount of increase from the tax levy. It'd be interesting to like just reconcile that increase is primarily going to these three things. If there is, if if there is such a simple explanation. And again, the next review is fine. I, you know, to discuss it now.
It's a good point, Bonnie. We'll we'll discuss that when we meet. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, to kind of co-tail on on Bonnie's point, I think, Eric, if you looked at this and maybe just sorted. You know, your percentage change to actual column. Ascending and descending and then your nominal budget change. So we don't just have the percentages, but also the nominal amounts. Ascending and descending, I think that would give us the view. And then, like Bonnie said, then we can just look at that relative to the taxing, you know, the the delta and the tax collections.
Sounds good. If that is a view of the budget that would be helpful, then I will provide. So in in terms of just a casual glance for for the numbers, I think the column that would be. Most useful would be the the far right one, the. Budget to budget change that shows the the difference from last year's budget to this year's budget. It just isn't arranged in any sort of hierarchy.
Yeah, you're right. I spoke. You know, now that I'm thinking, now noodling on this a little bit, it might also be interesting to compare and contrast that, sort of looking at the same. Measurement framework, if you will, the the deltas, both percentage and nominal, and then look at that versus the changes in our circulation patterns. You know, those that have persisted.
That sounds good. I can talk with Anna as our statistician as to how to bring together. Those two information threads.
Yeah, and then the other thing would be. Eric is, you've got a couple of line items in there that are sort of initiatives that that. Like on the outreach program and things like that, that those would be useful to sort of see those up there as well.
Useful to see them as.
As sort of big changes. There's, I I looking at the the detail part of things, I I thought on outreach supplies that was going up from 500 to 5,500. Oh, you know what? Which is, okay, you know, I'm looking at the the detail part of it. That only went up from that went from 5,000 to 5,500. I think under, I I'm looking at the the detail that goes behind this, that 43668 account. That line item has it going from 500 to 5,500. While you're, what you're showing us tonight is 5,000 to 5,500.
Oh, did I, I missed, I missed the state of the number. Yeah, if it says five, if it says 500, it should be 5,000.
Yeah, yeah. So I I was just using that as an example. If there are any accounts that we're looking to sort of. Invest in for something, you know, over and above where we were before, those would also be useful line items to see as far as a summary, but.
Sounds good. Okay, additional questions? Okay, not hearing any, then I will move us along. Please do if dig into the the numbers here as. As as deeply as. As you want and pass along any questions that you've got. So that we can have good discussion. This is one of the most critical things that gets done each year.
Eric, since I'm coming in the library, I'll be in about 11 tomorrow for signing those checks. Could you print out all this budget information and leave it at the desk for me?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
All right. So I think that is going to take us. Take a section to the director's report. The the next portion here would be the. Yes.
Sorry, we added to new business, the teen volunteer program overview.
That's right. Thank you for reminding me. Yes. Jenny.
Hi, thanks so much, Eric. The teen volunteer program. Well, I'm really excited to, we're really excited to get going on the program. We were hoping to launch. The initiative in the fall, the late fall, but it didn't work out and then. Because of COVID, it's been pushed back a few times, so we're hoping that it's maybe going to start in late February or March. So this is a program that would run twice a month. I've been meeting with. Melissa and Eliza to kind of help put a framework to it. So, and I think that we're really excited about it and I'm looking forward to seeing how it will go. So it's a teen volunteer program. It's called the mystery reader program. So each storytime will feature a new mystery reader. So some of the people that have been interested in reading at our program are. Senora Grum, who she's a Spanish teacher at the elementary school, Dana Hanson, she's the director of the preschool. Mrs. Jesson, she's a, she's a teacher over at the elementary school. So we're starting with a a number of different teachers, but we're hoping to keep expanding. And then we'd also love to have some teens. Read as well at some of the different programs and the, I think what's really nice about the mystery reader program is that it invites. New people into the library as well as the group of people that follow them as well. So I think we're hoping to get. Child, you know, different groups of children coming into the library to enjoy the story time. So the teens are going to be volunteering, so they would be the people that are greeting. The families and bringing them into the library. They'd also be running, they would be introducing the mystery reader and then they would also be. Running the art project after the mystery reader has read their story. So I think that, you know, when we were looking at the program, it's just. A new idea to try and bring, continue bringing new kids into the program and continue growing a love for the library, which. I think all of us on the board have, and so we want to give that to the kids as well. So, yeah, Eliza's been great. So sorry, Eliza, I realized I hadn't responded to your email, but so I think. We definitely have some dates in March that are set up, but we're waiting to see on February. So. Eliza, did I miss anything? Was there something else?
Sorry, device issues. No, that sounds great, and I think that it could really help with the community outreach and establishing. And building the current relationships that we have with the various people who are coming in. So I'm, I'm excited about it.
Yes, it'll be really fun. Does anyone have any questions about the program?
That's great, Jenny.
Sounds great.
Oh, good, good. Yeah, well, storytimes are the best.
Story walk, story time.
You're right. Yes, it's always fun coming up with new ideas. So, yeah, so we'll keep you updated as as things progress. Hopefully we'll get things off the ground as soon as we can.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jenny. You're working on this has been great.
Thank you.
Bonnie, you have a yellow hand. Is that a hand raised or? Okay.
It's an applause.
I thought it was probably applause. But it was just one hand, so I wasn't sure.
Now there's a little.
There we go. There we go. All right. I don't think we have anything else to add as far as an update on the. Capital campaign. That's our one item under old business. Was there anything that you would add there, Kathy?
No, I don't think so. I mean, we'll be meeting tomorrow, so we'll keep you posted as things transpire. That is John and everyone said that big things now are developing a different newer relationship with the friends, hopefully. And just kind of plugging one. Melissa's doing a great job. It's a lot of organization on her part. She's leading us well and we're in good hands.
All right, and then for the the director's report, the the one item. That I would add to what I had already written was that we are, since it wasn't possible to do the usual staff. And trustee holiday luncheon that we do in the the normal times. That in talking with Kathy, I'm doing some work talking to Bluffingtons to see if we can set up something that would be. Something that would provide a nice meal for staff, but asynchronously without everybody getting together. So that is in the works and the one item that I really want to call attention to. The trustee report is that we filled our library associate position this past week. New hire is Rachel Yancy. Who comes to us with experience working behind the scenes at North Chicago Public Library. If you bump into Rachel, please introduce yourselves.
So how are we on our staffing needs?
All full.
Good. Congratulations. I was tired to do it these times. Sounds like we've got some great people.
We really do, really do. You know, it was. There were a couple of points during the fall there where it was pulling teeth, but we got. I think some really strong additions to the staff out of the process, which is, no matter how you get there, that's the important. All right. Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I think we're up to the adjournment. All right, a motion to adjourn.
You can have adjourned, Janie.
All right, motion from Janie, second for Matt, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Have a good evening, everyone.